It's 5:30 and we are meeting for a Parks and Rec meeting this evening at the Saldana City Council. Our lawyer, Mr. Chandler, is here. Our, oh gosh, city manager. My daughter just had a baby. I apologize. And so I would like to welcome everybody who's here this evening. And I would like to turn this meeting over to Manager Queen to share some opening remarks.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Vodla. So I'm here and going to be presenting some information. Andrew Carmichael, our Parks and Rec Director, is here from the staff, as well as Brooks Chandler, our city attorney. And typically, what we'll do in a work session, we've got a presentation. We presented some context and some background information, and then some initial recommendations that at the staff level, we would recommend be considered by the board related to our park use policy. Please, for the members of the board, feel free to answer, if you're okay, Chair Vodla, ask questions as we go. We're open to that. So if there are questions from board members as we're going through the presentation, please feel free to stop us. And either myself, Mr. Chandler, or Mr. Carmichael, as appropriate, will answer questions. It's not normally the case that the public participates in a work session, but there is a public comment period after the presentation that'll be available tonight. And folks will have an opportunity to speak to the board, is my understanding.
Yes, it'll be a 20-minute period, so at the end of the evening. So we appreciate you being here tonight, and we appreciate the fact that everybody has taken the time to put some effort into this, a lot of effort, actually. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm streaming on Zoom, so for those of us up here, for those folks to hear us, please use your microphone. And I'll move through the slides. Welcome, everybody. I wanted to just start off with kind of some foundation for the meeting tonight. So our Saldana Municipal Code creates the Parks Advisory Board for the purpose of making recommendations to the council, making recommendations to us, the staff. And so tonight, we're here to talk about Saldana Creek Park and our event reservation policy, and really restart the conversation about how the board wants to advise us moving forward on some of those policy questions. As I mentioned, we are going to present some background information and some initial recommendations, and you will have opportunities to ask questions of us. In terms of public input, there's the 20-minute testimony period that Chair Vodla mentioned tonight. And then, at a subsequent meeting, and we have a date picked out, but when we come back with actual documents, recommendations for action items in front of the board, there will also be public comment periods on those action items. And typically, those are not limited in terms of the number of speakers, the length of time. So the 20-minute period tonight is somewhat unique because we're doing a work session. But when we come back as a board, and maybe we can confirm with board members the date later in this meeting, there will be additional opportunities. So please, these slides will be put on the website later tonight, potentially, but we'll make them available, and it's got our information, as well as the park board information, on how to get written comments, or if you want to show up in public, that's welcome as well. In terms of what we want to cover, a little bit of history, but really as a way to just kind of gear us up to the current usage, so what's happening at the park right now. And we will talk about some of the legal framework that our policymaking falls within in terms of some federal and state statutes and court decisions. But we're not going to spend a lot of time on that, but I wanted to share that in terms of, as we move forward in crafting changes or solutions, just to be aware that these also will be guiding our decisions. And then we'll share with you some recommendations, really kind of on two different fronts. One would be administrative changes, process changes, but then also some potential updates to the Saldana Municipal Code, in two separate areas of the code. And then we'll wrap up with next steps and sharing dates of what happens next. This will be available for folks to read after the fact, but Andrew, do you want to speak briefly to kind of the history of the park and how we got to where we are?
Yeah, the park's been on everybody's radar for a long time, since it was first in 1947, established as the state maintenance yard when the Alaska Department of Transportation took over the process from the Alaska Road Commission. You know, Ark Lake is evidence of that, and that when they built the road that was based at Ark Lake and moved the location there. It went from there, it was originally a maintenance shop, and then the Solberg House, which where the resident was moved there in 1940s, was actually also a trooper barracks for a while, and then with time, the city's Saldana traded properties, and for the trooper location is now in there. And all the way through, people have always kind of eyeballed that as a city center. If you see some of the other places in Alaska don't have it, they suffer from not having a central place. So even the founding fathers, way back in the 80s and 90s, had viewed that as it is now, to some degree, and in terms of that stuff. And then in the 80s, the playground is developed because it was a local secret for about a year or two, and then a magazine came through, and that same magazine that said Saldana Creek Park was a local secret also named Saldana as the gas station, car dealership, city of the state, along the Thruher Fair back in the old days. We've come a long ways from there, but in terms of from the original thing. So that word got out, and then as time went on, we looked at it and negotiated with the state and the borough to do the land trade. Main Street Alaska, you see up there as referenced in 1959, '95, that was actually a process that was a community-driven process, charrette for deciding what to do with the city in a lot of ways, and what you see in Saldana Creek Park, a lot of people don't even know that that was, came out of the Main Street Alaska's vision, even though that particular document kind of went to the bottom of the drawer and came through, but they had visions of skating there, and visions of musical events, as that being the anchor of the community. And finally, now here we are, in this day and age, where it is, and it has changed the entirety of the Central Peninsula's interactivity and been magnificent. And now, we're essentially, we've got a teenager on our hands that we're growing pains as such. We're trying to change how we handle, you know, handle teenagers the same way as you do a four-year-old, and in terms of that stuff, even though every once in a while, we all act like the four-year-olds still. In 2000, after long negotiations and land trades, it even included the River Center over by the airport, city received title for the property after it was cleaned up, and we do still do some testing in terms of those things. And from that time point, right about before that happened, when Parker Park was developed, it was envisioned as the event center, or where events could happen, where the roads could be closed off, and stuff like that. But as soon as we got title to the Saldana Creek Park, we put in some paths and got it seeded and got us in. It was the next year where the chamber said, wait a minute, we want that one. And that was, those were the first events that were there with Progress Days, and for many years, then after a bit, the watershed forum moved the River Festival over, so a number of years, we had two big events, and then the occasional ongoing pavilion rentals on the playground part of it. And then, 2009, we started working wholeheartedly, the city started appropriating money for the final development. In 2009, it started the conceptual process with stakeholder meetings, and that's where, again, where especially the music venue or performing stage came out, and as something that the people had wanted from early on, to have someplace to gather and perform, and those type of things. 2010 was the first phase, all the dirt work and all those type of things. If you remember before that, we had the big concrete rings for testing the wells and those type of things, and we just affected another test not too long ago to continue that process from the old days. And then '13, we awarded the contract for the final phase and construction, got it done in '13, took a year off, let the grass grow a little bit, and then started up with... 2014, we run Saldana, won the state Facilities of Excellence Award from Alaska Recreation and Park Association, because playground plus pavilion plus everything else, and the boardwalks and everything else, when you look at that park, it's a pretty phenomenal statewide effort that put that together all the way from Washington to here. So pretty crazy that that works, and one of the anchors of the city's economic base, so we can have people where to go over the years for that. Since then, though, if you look at 2014, we won the award, it was pretty small, and then 2015 had the first Frozen River Beer Festival in February, went off really well, with success there, so we proved that that facility could be used for summer and winter events. And then in 2019, we graduated and applied for, the chamber applied for the Levitt Music Foundation grant, right before COVID started, in terms of those things. And when we looked at their requirements and stuff for that Levitt Nationwide Competition Grant, Saldana Creek was checked off every box you could possibly imagine for what they looked for, for music to come in and change it. And then, as we moved on, we got busier and busier. Wednesday Market grew, Wednesday Market grew, and then we kind of combined it, and Wednesday is just mayhem. But nonetheless, between the Wednesday Market and the Levitt Foundation, that national organization's vision has materialized in Saldana in terms of those things, by bringing community together, not just the 4,000 people inside the city residents, but from all the area. People come to Saldana on Wednesday night to have a beer, listen to some music, or not have a beer, have a soda, and just sit and relax, and it's done what their vision did, through the arts, has brought the communities together. And then, so if you look up at this one, so you would look back in 2012, 14 user groups, and now we're at 80 user groups for the park. Event days went from 20, now 108. Small, medium events, 12, 68. Large events, 6, 40. Essentially, what it boils down to now, if you put a tent and one food truck in there, you're going to have an attendance of 400 or 500 people, because they think something big's happening. And we even counsel people when they come to reserve their events, say, where are you sitting, and are you ready for this, to some degree? Well, you need this, this, and walk people through those processes, so they can be ready for it, because people are trained to see something, they don't necessarily need a sign, they pull in, whip in, and see if they can get some hot dogs, or whether their favorite food's there. And my wife always wants to know if you have tacos there, so she can get her cob on Wednesday, and those type of things. So it, people really do look at it, it's got a tourist base, it's got a local base, it's got a community area base. So now is when you come up to the really substantial list of what actually happens there. And we were, when we met earlier, there was even a number of entities that aren't listed on here. We have, in addition, at the end, we have a very wide range of churches that also do their services there, but also you see National Rifle Association, Frozen River Fest, Clash Reunion, Progress Days, Root Beer Fundraisers, Professional Fighter Fighters Association, Relay for Life. I mean, there's just a complete cornucopia of all types of different events, from all types of different sizes. Event sizes, we have the pavilion size, smaller, 35, 40 people, the big, I like to call them bigger-than-backyard events, you know, the ones where you have relatives that are coming over, and you'd really rather not deal with them at home. So you take it to a pavilion. 25 years ago, we rented, the city rented, or reserved and rented the Saldana Creek Park Pavilion by the playground. Now we have that pavilion, we rent out and reserve, now we reserve the one at Farnsworth, plus the two by the Fred Meyer Pavilion, as well as the stage. So we've gone from one that was fairly busy to now four, that are sometimes a challenge to get into. So we definitely have some growing pains. You know, when the council bought the Davis Lot property, there was people on both sides of the fence, but wow, what foresight, just to be able to solve some of the parking problems. We've kind of, so those are growing pains. We have an army of, not an army, but we have a number of staff members that put out a plethora of no-event parking signs for the businesses that can't handle the overflow. And in fact, until later in the night, then, in fact, so it's that we've worked with the community, trying to do as best we can, so that the businesses aren't adversely impacted by that technically almost attractive nuisance that is magnificence, and when you've got 2,000 people. Other communities, a couple other communities in the state have tried to pattern what we've done, and haven't even come close. Anchorage had the Levitt Amp Music Festival for the grant, and it didn't really work for the Levitt Foundation, because it didn't, the epicenter or the focus or the main attracting point wasn't towards the locals, it ended up being almost more for the tourism industry, is what I understand. I might be completely out the lunch. Whereas here, we have a mixture of everything. Interesting side note, talking with people, you know, as they grow up, they know people, everybody you see is there, and on one turn or another. So that's what we have now, is we've got a, we've got a little bit, we've gone from little baby rubber bubby bumpers wheeling the park towards maturity, and now it's getting mature, and it's time to change how we do business a little bit. And so it meets all the needs for as many people as we possibly can.
Thanks, Andrew. I'm gonna, I've got a couple slides more that are kind of opening remarks, and then I'll kick it back to you when we get into some of the administrative, operational recommendations. But this slide was just intended to remind folks, if you recall, our attorney had prepared a memo in July that we shared publicly, and it went into more specificity about some of the federal and state framework, legal framework, that we would work under. And that comes from the United States Constitution, the Alaska Constitution, Alaska statutes, as well as court decisions, both at the Alaska Supreme Court and the United States Supreme Court. So I didn't want to spend a lot of time on that, although if there are specific questions, Mr. Chandler is here to answer that, but more so to kind of show you the things that we can control, or, oh, there you go, the areas that we can influence, and those are our local municipal code, our special event booking policy, which comes from a recommendation from this body, and then is ultimately adopted by the council, and then our administrative practices, how Andrew directs the staff in that department. Those are the things we can control. And so those are the three areas where we have recommendations, and this is just meant to remind folks that they have to still comply within the broader context of the state and federal restrictions above us. And this was more kind of my approach to this project. I wanted to share what, for me, were some of my guiding principles in kind of re-engaging in this discussion. First off, I wanted to recognize that we want our public spaces to be safe and welcoming, that we believe that this park is a unique regional asset, benefiting not just the members of our community, but those in the surrounding areas as well. The idea that the park is a public forum, meaning it hosts and supports non-city, non-government events, in fact, most of the events at the park are not city functions, that makes it a public forum, and I approached this project under the assumption that our community would want that to continue. Couple other kind of framework things, I think, and we always try to ensure that our city policies are clear and easily understood, so that someone reading the policy from the public is going to interpret that the same way as a staff member who's administering that policy. So we want them to be clear, and where we can, we want to remove ambiguity, or define things that are not defined currently. That was a part of our approach. We also need our policies to be legally defensible, which is where Mr. Chandler's review can assist us in making those decisions, as well as practical to administer by our staff. So some of the ideas that we've heard, you know, they would require different levels of resources, so it's a conversation, you know, with the council about what's an appropriate practical way to achieve an outcome we might want to do. I want to reiterate that we value your participation in this process, so viewpoints are valid, they will be respected here. Thank you for coming again. I know many people have been waiting a long time for us to get this started. And as I mentioned, we are restarting the conversation, so this will be the first of a few meetings, both at this board level, and then ultimately at the city council, where these will be discussed, considered, and some solutions put in place. So thank you for engaging with us. Andrew, we're going to now touch on some of the kind of process administrative things, and I'd maybe ask you to speak to these slides. Thanks.
One thing, one topic that came up with relation to types of events was the community express can request that they have a mechanism to know what's going on at the park. So if it's an event that may not be their cup of tea, that they would know ahead of time to, okay, I'm not going there today, you know, just like the movie theater, when you drive by and say, oh, it's Avatar, oh, I didn't want to go see that, or Puss in Boots, yeah, you're going to have to pry me into the thing, I don't want to go there. That's a basic level, but that was one of the things we did heard, and some of the frustration from folks was that even though, you know, to be able to know whether an event would fit their taste or not, and with relation to legalities and such like that, aside from trying to solve any of that particularly, in this process, we tried to look at and see, how can we communicate better? How can we help people to be better informed before they even leave their house, or once they pull in, or on certain days? So some of the topics that we're looking at, and we're poison-rated again, we're already funded for some of them, they were worked into our overall plans, and one of those was the online event reservation calendar, where people could look at the events that are happening, and pull up the schedule, and say, okay, I want to go, you want to go to the park Wednesday night, or Thursday night? Wednesday night's music, and too many people. Thursday, what's going on Thursday? Oh, nothing. Okay, cool. Or Friday, oh, I got the headbangers music going, not my cup of tea, so I might not go, or work around those type of things. So to be able to communicate that, so people can look there in terms of that, so that would help. From the application period, application, Joel Todd, the Assistant Director, has been beating his head against the wall with the old one, so it was time to change that anyway, and expanding some of those things based upon what we heard from the people, where we gain a little more information, trying to tease out a little more information about what else can happen at a specific event. And some of that comes from, you know, from them, but also maybe some of our questions, where we can review those with them, and that can be included on that, you know, as far as some of the specific stuff, or topics, or genres, or some of the very, very details, we still, we're not adventuring into that. But to try to get more information, because people come to us a lot of times with events, and though we deal with events, for us, you know, 100 times a year, we've got a new event, they're not sure what the parameters are, what should they would think about, and that's where we really start to work with them and say, okay, how many people you think? Well, I don't know, you know, and start coming through, do you have a food truck? Do you have a tent? Yes, we got four food trucks, and we're going to set up some tents? Okay, you're probably going to need the lower lot open, just because people are going to wander in and see, once, because people are trained to come there. So, and try to work with the people in terms of those things, so that they're ready, as well as we're ready, and then through that process, be able to get information that we can disseminate, or have available to the general public, to decide whether or not they want to attend event B, C, D, or F, and go from there. So we view that as tantamount, as far as being able to, like I said, we'd already been funded for the online reservation, we had tried a calendar a couple years ago, it didn't really, because it worked out, because there were so many different events going on in the town. If you look at some of those calendars, it's just mind-boggling, the amount of events that this community puts on and hosts, and has in various areas throughout the summer. You know, we're here, we're known for the river, but as far as events, there, it's every weekend, every day of the week, there's something going on, and somebody through the community is putting on for the community, it's pretty fantastic. So the success of the park isn't that much of a surprise, but nonetheless, we're back to the growing pains then. Part of that would be real-time information to public and scheduled events, and through that, not only online, but the plan is to establish additional signage kiosks, where people can either scan it with, get a QR code and scan it, but with recognition that not everybody is on that technological line, that there will also be a weekly hard copy of all the events happening, and the basic description for that event, to be able to let people have an informed decision as to whether or not they want to be in the park that day, or attend the event, and to see what's on the menu, kind of a menu, that one doesn't work, but Saturday night, Saturday looks fun, and those type of things. So we, moving forward, and we have some projects going, where we pave the path and stuff, we got some grant stuff, so that will have access points expanded to the east side of the park. So taking those in mind, we're not exactly sure where these signs were going, but we're looking at, we have the main kiosk, but at least two more, plus then a, decided upon a location where the full week schedule will be. We know we will normally post schedules on the pavilions and such, but that doesn't, to date, that has just been user groups, stuff like that, without the information, so the people didn't have. So we'll have, for the technological folks that are ready to use the QR codes, we'll have that available, as well as the hard copy right then and there, so they don't even have to pick up their phone, they can just walk up and see what event's happening, if they hear noise, or sound, or people gathering, or see a lot of cars. And then, one concept that's also coming out that the community mentioned is days when there's no events. And frankly, that was a well-received impetus or idea from operational, because some weeks we have trouble being able to water and/or affect our maintenance, because it's so popular, because we can't, we can't get an eight-hour stretch without an event, or a full day's worth of event, and to be able to water and get the grass to grow for the fun that the grass will have on Wednesdays, and then over the weekend. So just to me, we're looking at maybe having a Monday and a Tuesday each week, where there's no major event, there's no events on the stage, or maybe there's some other stuff, but not, we don't reserve things on the Mondays and Tuesdays, except for maybe the small pavilions, where it's more of a family, bigger-than-backyard event type of thing, in terms of that stuff. And that would work. If a school bus pulls up with a class in May, and they didn't reserve or anything else on a Monday or Tuesday, are we going to run them off? No. No, that's what that park's for, it's for not only the program stuff, but also the impromptu stuff, where you don't have to make a reservation, you know. On the peninsula, we're not real reservation-oriented a lot of times in our recreation, and that is why we live here, is because we can do what we want when we get the urge to. And maybe we thought, maybe having a couple days where they just don't have to, you don't have to, I don't want to check the schedule on Monday, you want to go to the park Tuesday? Yeah, we don't have to check the schedule, don't have to, it's closed. So what's that word? So then, even regardless of whatever, if whether people don't dig the big crowds, or maybe the topic, then they could still have, know that those days are there, set aside for whomever, in terms of those things. So on a logistic basis, that's kind of what we've been looking at operationally, to help people have a better idea of what's going on. My wife and I were in Portland during the election, that one, a number of years ago, and our Waze app and our Google map almost said, I don't know, because all the streets were closed, so many streets were closed for the demonstrations and everything else, but, so we had a heck of a time getting to our hotel. But that's one of those unique occurrences, it still may be popular on a Tuesday, but for the most part, non-programmed. So that's some of the things operationally we were looking at. Once we get beyond that, then we start getting a little bit of Brooks's range, a little bit of the council's range, that's with code changes and those type of things. But that was what we're looking to do, gain more information about the event, so that we can better disseminate that information to people who want to know what's at the park before we go. You know, we'd have come into town, we'd have come into Portland from the east, had we known all those streets were closed. And that case was an option, but the last thing you want to do is expect a casual day at the park, and all of a sudden, you pull in, you can't park for a mile and a half, or you can't fit in. So to give people better information with this jewel we have, and/or be able to make the decision, no, I'm not turning right, son, I'm going to turn left, we're going to go to Farnsworth, it's too busy in there, or some of the other parks, we're reviewing those that we have set up. So that's what we're kind of looking at from our operational standpoint, below the code and legality issues and those type of things.
Thanks, Andrew. So now, we'll transition into some potential code amendments that we would recommend be considered, and the first set live within the chapter of our municipal code that governs parks, what's allowed in parks, what's the process. And so that's Chapter 12.28, which is our park section of code. And a couple of things that, working with Brooks, our attorney, we're looking at doing is, we can expand on the current definition of disorderly conduct, we can expand our definition of facility, to make sure that it's clear that that includes park pavilions and performance areas. And then, when it comes to nudity and sexual conduct and prohibiting those activities or ensuring that they don't occur, we would need to define those. So those would be new definitions that would go into the code. I've got two kind of examples of languages here, but if we move forward in this way of the board feeling like there would be support for potentially bringing these into the code, of course, we would work with our attorney to finalize the language and bring that language included in your packet next time. But one of the things that'll be important for us to remember is, for example, this language in and of it- language in and of itself is not sufficient. So I've had some conversations with folks about the level of specificity that's required for the city to regulate or prohibit certain conduct. So for example, it would not be sufficient legally or administratively to just use language like nudity is not allowed or naked. We, we actually need to go through and describe in very clear terms what that means. So this slide's a bit of a heads up that when folks see that language come forward, it's even that language itself, reading it might make folks uncomfortable because we'll now be talking in very explicit and specific terms about these concepts of which parts of the body would be inappropriate to be shown in public, what sexual conduct or sexual activities might mean in the context of a public space. So one of our recommendations is to bring that forward, let the board weigh in on that as it relates to the parks chapter. And again, that would be drafted and finalized by our attorney with input and reference, I think, to some existing state statute language and some of those other legal frameworks that have been used to define some of these terms. In addition to definitions, there's also a section of that chapter of the municipal code that talks about when a permit is issued. So currently we have standards that say that the city shall issue a permit to reserve one of our facilities if the proposed activity is, is not reasonably anticipated to cause violence. That's one of the existing standards in our code, that we shall issue a permit when the proposed activity won't entail unusual or extraordinary or burdensome expense to the city. And that might be if there was an event where we anticipated, for example, a very large security need, we would be working with those folks ahead of time to ensure there was a plan in place for that. We also have a standard about issuing a permit when just the, the facility's available. So if it's available, we can issue you a permit. And we're going to recommend that several standards be added to this list. One would be that we shall issue a permit if denial of the permit violates a person's constitutional rights. So I think that's an important additional criteria for us to consider, that we shall issue a permit when the proposed activity is not reasonably anticipated to include disorderly conduct or obscene content. So this is going to relate back to those definitions that would be developed and adopted into the code. So that if we were anticipating that a certain event was going to cross that threshold, that would, could be grounds for denial of a permit. But those will be really clearly defined, not, it wouldn't be a very subjective determination or an arbitrary determination. It would be us reading the letter of, of that section of code very closely. The last standard we propose to add is really kind of an after the fact so that we shall issue a permit if that person has previously complied with the terms of their permit. So if there were an event where there was, you know, any number of things could have gone sideways with them not complying with the terms of their permit, this new standard would give us the administrative ability to say, you know what, last year you didn't comply with the terms and this year your permit is denied. So that's a new standard that we can consider that we might propose adding. The one standard that we would recommend be removed from the code is, is probably one that many people like being in the code, but it's the standard that says that we, we would deny a permit essentially if it was unreasonably going to interfere or detract from the general public enjoyment of the park. The reason that we recommend that be removed is because that is a very vague standard that's not been defined and we as staff should not be in a position of inserting our own judgment to something of this magnitude. So legally, it puts the city at risk if we were to deny a permit and cite this section because it lacks clear standards, it doesn't have adopted policy behind it. It really puts us at risk and it, it leaves members of the public also not having a shared understanding of what that, what that means. So this was some of the language that was flagged in our existing code in discussion with our attorney that we would recommend come out. The other thing that we have been working on and would be prepared to present likely to the council, though not to this board, would be an ordinance that gets closer at the definitions of harmful to minors and obscene. So this we're viewing as a lewdness ordinance. It would not be specific to public parks. It would be applicable citywide. And so it would not live in the parks chapter. It would probably live in, in title nine, which is a different part of our code that covers other kind of citywide issues. But I think that if, if the concern is that we have standards in place that allow the city to act when behaviors cross a very real threshold, that this would be one approach. So our attorney has drafted this ordinance. It would not be my intention to present that ordinance to this board because I don't believe necessarily that it's the responsibility of the park board to advise on something, the citywide policy of this magnitude, but it is part of our package of recommendations and it would be presented to the city council as potentially one piece of, of the changes that we're recommending. The additional ideas we've heard that did not make it into our first cut at recommendations. So I wanted to acknowledge different things that we've heard that were suggested through the many meetings and maybe give an opportunity for people to ask questions or allow us to speak to at, at this stage, why it didn't make it into our initial list of recommendations. And those were ideas about potentially implementing a rating system, some way for us to evaluate events ahead of time and designate kind of an age appropriateness. That in our estimation is, is not practical for staff. We would have to develop, there would have to be criteria developed. It's unlike movies, which are static. Live events, I don't know of a good way to, to evaluate a live event ahead of time. And then I think legally it, it would put the city at some peril to have this kind of discretionary decision making. So we, we talked about it, we heard it. It's not in our initial package of recommendations. The next two are kind of related. There were suggestions about requiring certain events to be physically screened from other parts of the park. And I think this spoke to the perceived conflict of different users using the park for different things. So if you're there heading straight to the fishing access stairs, or if you're there heading to the playground, the concept of, of not having the events that are performed on stage visible. That's related, I think, to the, the next suggestion about requesting that certain events be held indoors or at an alternate location. And specifically the sports center was proposed as one of those. As with the first bullet point, those would both require this, the city to adopt standards and criteria for how to evaluate different events, which ones cross the threshold and, and I think carry the same challenges in terms of administrative ability to, to do that as well as would they satisfy the legal framework that we're required to satisfy under the, the US and Alaska constitution? So we have not put more effort into that to seeing if either of those ideas could be fully fleshed out beyond initial discussions with our attorney and our team and, and whether we felt like those were viable options at this point. The third, I mean, excuse me, the fourth bullet point would be essentially trying to establish a requirement that events at the park be appropriate for everyone. I think setting a new standard that would essentially try to limit events entirely if they're not age appropriate. Again, we've struggled to understand how this could be implemented short of disallowing music, for example, or disallowing live performances. I mean, we would be able to potentially conceive of a solution like that, but I don't think that we would be able to allow some music, but not other music, for example. And so this is one, any of these or other ideas, I'm really open and welcoming to the feedback of the board, of the public, of the council. And it may be that there are certain things that you want more work done on. So you can direct us as staff to work a little harder, come back with, with a version of this, what would that look like? And we're open to that feedback. But I wanted to at least acknowledge that we heard these suggestions even though they weren't presented in our initial recommendations. That really concludes our, our first presentation back to the community. So I view it as a starting point for more work to be done. And I had asked Andrew to pull the board members to see if we could identify another date in January that's viable for a meeting because I'd like to keep the momentum going at this point and not have long, long sections of time if we're able to in between meetings. Tuesday, the 24th was a, a potential date where the majority of the board members would be available. And so I'd suggest that if, if board members are good with that, that we go ahead and schedule that meeting for that date. On that date, you would see in your packet, so released the week before the meeting, the actual documents that accomplish the concepts that I've described today. So we will have prepared for you a draft of the changes to the park section of code. So the new definition, those, those changes to the, the standards that direct us on issuance of the permit. We would have some written language about some of these administrative policy process things that we're recommending. So the blackout days where there's no event scheduled, the signage, the software for the, the online reservation, a little bit more detail about how that might work and, and what information might we be pulling from applications that then get shared publicly as we work to, to improve communication. So those would be available and they would potentially be scheduled as action items for a formal recommendation, which means that the public would be able to comment on each of those items and not limited to that 20 minute aggregate comment period. So that's our plan moving forward. My hope is that the board, oh, yes, Leona.
Got to get used to that. I'm, I'm curious that when we get the packet a week before, is it permissible to give that to other people outside of the council so they can look at it and before they come to our next meeting?
Yes, thank you. And that's a great question. So when we publish the packet, it will simultaneously be available to the board and the public. So it'll be publicly available ahead of time. It's more normal when we do a presentation at a work session not to make that available ahead of time so that we have an opportunity to speak through it, but absolutely. So for all the action items that they'll be available on our website and in our normal places where we make that the week prior to the meeting. Thank you. And the parks board, I'm open to the board taking the time you need to arrive at a comfort level with a recommendation. So I'm not presuming that it'll be one meeting, it might be more. And, and we'll just as staff work with you to respond to the desires of the board when it comes to public input, when it comes to work product. You know, in meetings themselves is typically a poor place to create new work. Oftentimes what we can do then is, is take the notes, get the direction and then come back to you at, at a later date with some, some solutions. So, but I'd like to keep that going. So thank you for emailing your availability. We can move quickly on this as well, as quickly as you'd like. And then at some point, when the boards had an opportunity to really kind of finalize your recommendations, we will forward those to the city council and they will consider your recommendations alongside with that additional ordinance that I mentioned that would live in, in title nine. So that's the plan. I'd like to be in a position to help see resolution of this if, if that's possible in February or March, but, but the timeline is somewhat to be determined through the process itself. And that really concludes our portion of the information we wanted to present, although I know we're, we're happy to answer questions if there are any. Thank you.
I'd like to know if any of the committee members would like to ask any additional questions before we go to our next step?
I don't know if this is the appropriate time or not to, to bring up a concern, but the idea of an open day or a blackout day is amazing. I think it's great. But would it lead to impromptu groups performing on those dates without avoiding, by voiding the reservation process?
Would it prevent the gentleman that was smoking spice and singing to everyone 6:30 every morning? No. But we were able to manage him. No, that's why we kind of eyeballed the Monday and Tuesday because just, so we haven't had much. We've had some unique inter, inter regulations with that, but not much. When they, they need, in order to do such in a manner that would be broadcast or loud, they'd have to coordinate us to get power and some of the access to those type of things. So passively, those things would not be able to, be available if they brought a self thing and then we can deal with it from there. And normally an event that's there does need our help in a, in a, in a, to some level just to be able to do what they need to do. It's not saying it couldn't happen. We still have buses or, and a lot of times people call to reserve the park and sometimes the dates don't work and we communicate to them, you know? Nothing says you can't set your pop-up tent from your backyard over in the corner and do your thing. And a lot of people have done that. So, and that's one of the impromptu things that I'm, could that happen? Yes. Is it, is it a fear having managed the park for the last 20 years? No, not really.
Thank you, Mr. Carmichael. Are there any additional questions? Thank you.
I'm curious, do we have to worry about these things being enforced and will we take a look at that?
I don't know. Should I direct that to you, Mr. Carmichael or to you, Ms.?
I'd be happy to kind of speak to the idea of enforcement. So yeah, we do, I mean, generally in crafting new regulations, new policy, we do want to have considered the enforceability of that. And so that's why I focus on using very clear language when we're thinking of concepts so that we can help prevent one person's interpretations being different from another. It protects us and it protects our staff frankly in administering the policy that's ultimately adopted by the council. So the recommendations we bring you, the ideas that are vetted through our staff and our attorney, we will speak to that. So if there is an idea where we are feeling like it may not be enforceable, either from the administrative perspective or legally, we certainly will highlight for, that for the board and speak to that.
Thank you, Ms. Queen. Is there anybody else? I have a question and I think Andrew, this is for you and Mr. Carmichael. Would it be one day or two day or two days that you would close the park as to events like this? Is that just something that we can still talk about, whether it would be one day or two days?
Absolutely. That's, that's an idea we came up with to vet through the advisory boards, community members and then either change it to three or drop it to one or drop it to half or that the boards were way, way open to that.
I want to thank all of you, Ms. Queen, Mr. Carmichael, Mr. Brooks, for all the work that you put into this. This has been a lot of work and I'm glad that we're taking a look at this so that we can view all aspects of our park and all of our parks and how they impact people and how they give people an, an ability to enjoy not just music and not just Wednesday in the park or the other events that we have because we have so many, like you said, church groups, kids go up there and do dance routines with their dance teachers. And so I think this, this is a lot of information. This is the first time we're all seeing it, so it's a lot to take in. So it will be, it'll be something that I think we can actually develop, something that will work for the community as a whole. Not everybody will probably be happy with everything. Nobody ever is as a group of everybody, but I think that there are some elements that we can really take a good, clear look at based on all the work that all of you have done. So thank you and, and you as well, Mayor Whitney. Thank you very much. Say, okay, then we'll go ahead to public comments. Thank you. Before I do that, I need to read, I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and read that. I won't, you won't do your time.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question of the, for clerk's assistance? Should I log off the Zoom at this point so that we're no longer sharing the screen?
If you, they're limited to three minutes. Please provide your first name, last name and address for the record. And I know everybody who'll be here will be polite and listen to one another. So I appreciate all of you attending this evening. I won't read the whole thing. I won't read the whole thing.
Our IT department tells me there's nothing wrong with this computer every time. It works for them, just not for me. Just give us a, let's take a three-minute recess, if that's okay, we'll get this lined
Now? Oh, gosh. Hi, my name is Susan Smalley, and I live at 105 Lindwood in Kenai. I shop and pay my taxes over here, spend a lot of time. A sincere thank you to the appointed, the elected, and those who are hired to part of our representative democracy at the local level. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm 74 years old, I've lived here nearly half a century, and I don't get surprised as often as I used to. But when my Pride March participation was used as a platform for labeling groomer with a dash of inference of pedophiles on parade, I was dumbfounded. Traditional family values hold the more sacred inclusive meaning to me in my life and practices. You don't know me, but I'm going to share. I'm heterosexual. I've been married to the same person for 54 years. I'm a mom, a grandma, and an auntie. It says on the back of my shirt, probably. I'm a woman of faith, I love Jesus, I sing in the choir, I've taught Sunday School, I'm a volunteer, and a four-decade election worker. Walking down the street in Soldatna, carrying my sign which reads "God Loves Everyone, No Exceptions," getting flipped off, having obscenities shouted from always-moving vehicles and a target of rolling coal should have been a clue. Call me naive. How many in attendance here today were at the celebration? I don't count the vitriol on wheels as attending. How many people contacted my husband and I to ask any questions? We were there from the beginning moment to the end. This is my third time to speak publicly about the event and give firsthand testimony. The first was in the fall, and I was flummoxed by Mayor Whitney reading a well-written statement about appropriate behavior toward the council and staff prior to public testimony. Another surprise in my old life, that we adults don't know how to not berate and denigrate and threaten. We all know the reading came about because of the violent language and behaviors demonstrated time and time again toward our brothers and sisters who serve us in many ways through local government, under the flag of traditional family values. Another surprise, but not a good one. I hope you are not shocked that I came here wearing a T-shirt offering hugs and pants that are flesh-colored, AKA simulated nudity, as labeled by one of our former elected officials. When I walk back, you'll see my pants, and I really am wearing pants. I also come with demands that arise from my family values. One, kombucha and not beer in the garden. Number two, food trucks must all be vegan, no sugar, no fat, no electric guitar music or head banging, no axe-throwing, no hellfire and brimstone church services, because as a person of faith since birth, that's not my Jesus, that's not my values. I actually, that's kind of silly, but I demand and respectfully request that we prioritize and provide safety for all of our brothers and sisters.
Thank you very much, Ms. Smalley. Is there anybody else who'd like to provide testimony? Go ahead, thank you. Please come up and restate your name and your address.
My name is, my name is Josh Silzo, and I live in the Salamanthoff neighborhood in Soldatna. And I just want to say thank you so, so much. For those of us who do want to see a legitimate process, civil discourse, and just a sane conversation about appropriate boundaries in our community, this is exactly what I was hoping to hear tonight. Thank you. We get that we're not all going to see eye to eye about things. This isn't about suppressing anyone's beliefs or anything else. It's about drawing boundaries that pretty much we all, I think, agree on. And I appreciate so much the work that's gone into this. I, I know it's taken time, and that a lot of people were impatient, a lot of people were inappropriate and rude, and it's taken a lot of professionalism and patience and hard work, and, and thank you for, for hearing what needed to be heard in the midst of all the noise. A couple of things I'm going to mention just briefly that may or may not have a, a part in this particular context, but I do think that when talking about lewdness and things like that, it is appropriate to talk about simulated behavior, or behavior that simulates conduct in the disorderly conduct statute. So, if, if from a distance, I can't tell the difference between real and fake nudity, it's still nudity because the statute, in the Alaska statute, says that the reason that nudity is a problem is because of the reckless disregard for the offensive effect it has on other people around. And so, if the thing the person is doing has the same effect on me because I don't understand that actually that's just thinly veiled nudity, unlike my neighbor's pants here, which are not thinly veiled nudity, then that's, it's causing the same problem. And, and part of the disorderly conduct statute is that it's conduct likely to cause conflict, right? The other thing that I'd just suggest is that the Soldatna Police Department and the, the city have an agreement that allows the police officers here to at least temporarily trespass people for violating city ordinances from public property. That's a very useful tool. If you can tell somebody you're trespassed from the park for 24 hours because you violated our code of conduct, you don't have to haul them to jail unless they refuse to leave. And that's a very handy tool for police officers to have that can sometimes take one bad actor, regardless of, regardless of what they're doing, take one bad actor and remove them from a, a situation, and immediately take the volatility out of that situation. That would be a very good tool for Soldatna Police to have, and I've worked in jobs where I've had that authority before, and it's, it's really diffused a lot of bad situations. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your testimony. Go ahead, please state your name and address, thank you.
All right, my name is Leslie Byrd, and I would rather not state my address, but I have a Soldatna PO box. Thank you. I am one of the coordinators of Pride in the Park, and this is my very first time speaking out publicly about the issues that have arisen from my event that I've hosted for the last six years. And I just wanted to personally apologize for all the extra workload that you all have had to endure, and you specifically, Ms. Queen, for the vitriol you have received. Not a single person reached out to me or my co-coordinator to ask us any of the questions that have led to this meeting, except for one public official who had no jurisdiction over the matter. And they, oh, so frustrating. But you can see why I have not spoken publicly before, you've seen all the vitriol, and Stephanie, you were unfortunately the victim of a lot of it. So, I am very, very grateful for all of the detail that's gone into this presentation, and I will be continuing to participate and follow along at, at my ability. Yeah, I just wanted to thank you all for that detail, and I'm happy to take questions about the actual event and what actually happened, if anyone has any of those. That's all.
For your testimony.
Hello, my name's Jacob, I'm at 48176 Ryan Creek Circle, Soldatna, Alaska, and also wanted to come up here and take a second to thank everybody for the work that's been put in. That was a very thorough presentation, and I appreciated it a lot, added a lot of clarity. I could tell that there's been a lot of work and care put into not stepping on anyone's constitutional rights, which I think is extremely important. The intention of, you know, getting involved with this early was to never make it harder for certain groups of people to use our beautiful park, but it was just to make sure that everyone was going to be safe and protected doing so, especially our minors. I was very excited to hear that there's work being done in that area, and that we're going to take careful look at it, and we're not just going to make silly decisions and, you know, use wordage that might not be appropriate. A lot of the legal explanation on how we need to define things further, I think, was very good to hear, and overall, I'm very thankful for how tonight went, and I'm looking forward to future meetings, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who'd like to come up and speak?
Good evening, I'm Chelsea, and it is, I live in the Salamanthoff area as well. I just wanted to thank you for this meeting tonight, and I also wanted to specifically thank you for not just focusing on the park in particular for some of these decisions, but that it would be citywide. That was very important to me, and I was, I was very thankful to hear that tonight. So, again, thank you for all the work that has been put into these decisions and, and the upcoming work as well. So, again, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anybody else? Thank you. Come up and state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Sarah Barrett, and I actually live in Kenai, but I attend a lot of events in Soldatna. And I wasn't actually planning on talking tonight, but I did write down a few notes. And first, I'd like to thank everybody for all the time and long hours you've put in for this specific topic. I grew up in a religious conservative cult where I did not have any freedom of speech, and so, I have really learned to treasure my ability to practice this, and it's been very important to me as somebody who's not been able to do that my entire life, to have these events where we can just be who we are. And I do want to say that I firmly believe that we should respect everybody's opinion, but no one group should be able to decide something as gray as what is considered immodest or modest for everyone. And if a group of people didn't want to participate in something that was for a specific minority or their allies, no one is forcing them to join. So, I do appreciate this effort that's going into define these things, but I really am urging you to take into consideration the fact that this freedom of speech is really important, and it means a lot for a lot of people, and I would love to just urge that that's taken into consideration. I don't know, so I'm just going to go back, but thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barrett, appreciate your comments.
Dennis Murray, 247 West Corral. Congratulations, Grandma. What hasn't been talked about is in the code now, and that's, that's the section 9.10.010, which is adult businesses. So, the city already has a rather substantive ordinance that addresses some of the things that you're talking about tonight, and it talks about different aspects of that, but what it, but it limits itself to the definition, or to adult business. But really, it's, it's about behavior, whether adult or child. So, I think that if you would look at that current ordinance, I think it might be instructive and helpful. Obviously, it's been on the books a while, I don't know how long, but it's pretty specific as to what is an acceptable behavior in those circumstances. And the difference that I see is that this is not an adult business, it's an adult activity. You could define it as an adult activity as opposed to an activity with children involved. So, I would just urge you to look at that and to see whether or not your existing ordinance could inform you with respect to this important issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much, we, I appreciate your testimony.
I could leave that with you?
Pardon me?
Could leave that?
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to provide testimony this evening? I'd like to open it up to committee members if there's anything you would like to say or respond to, not respond to, just say from your point of view. I don't see anyone. I'd like to make a statement. I've lived up here, even though I have a funny accent, for many years. I love doing community service, I love being there for our students and our children, I've been on the school board for 15 years, and I taught for, I'm not even going to tell you how many. I have always taught, that everything been taught, from my very strict upbringing, I am a Catholic, and I was always taught to treat everybody with respect and to honor everybody. I lived in a small community, and there were only Irish, Italian, some Greek people, and Armenians. So, I never saw anybody of color, and I never saw anybody who was really different from me. But as I've grown, and I've matured, and I've traveled around the world, I realize that every single person matters, and every single person has a right to their voice and their beliefs and how they live. I don't walk over other people's values, I try to understand them, and I try to be patient and be inclusive. I don't want to exclude anybody. So, it's really important to me that we had this meeting tonight, and all this information that was brought forth and how it was presented, and it was, I mean, it was a lot to take in for me tonight. It's been a pretty exciting couple of days. And so, I just wanted to say that, that every voice matters, every person matters, and there's a way to look at all aspects of things so we can choose how to do it, so that if it isn't, if it isn't acceptable or appropriate, somebody has the opportunity to be well-informed about something, so they might not attend something. I'm not saying anything that has happened is appropriate or inappropriate, I'm not going to go there tonight. I am just saying that I think we need to really take a look at all this information, to look at the comments that have been made by the people who we work for, and, and take into consideration everything that they've done, and move forward, because we have a lovely community. We have some of the best parks, we have some of the best trails, we have places where kids can go and enjoy themselves and be themselves, and not worry that maybe they're a different color, or maybe somebody's really, they feel they're overweight, some little kid, maybe somebody's really skinny, maybe somebody's a different religion. Each one of us has a gift we bring, and I believe it's important to honor that gift. And so, that's, and I guess I'm saying too much, but it's really important to me that we think about inclusivity, not exclusivity. Thank you. So, we will be meeting again on January 24th, that's for the special meeting that we're having, but our next regular park But our next regular Parks and Rec advisory meeting is March 2 at 5:30 PM. So I didn't want you to get those two things confused, but I want you to know that we will be having a board meeting, and it will be broadcast live. So really appreciate everybody being here tonight, and thank you, Mr. Brooks, for coming down. And I do not know your last name.
Mr. George.
Mr. George. Thank you very much for coming down, and we have welcomed Ms. Oberts. Thank you. Yeah, and thank you to Jordan, Mr. Chilson, Mr. Ruffridge, I see you, Mayor. Thank you, Laura Reiner in the back, who made this up here. I mean, not that right there, but did a lot of work, I think. Thank you. We are adjourned at 6:40.